House had to be three and a half foot, which is what I told the gentleman. While he was standing at my office, we were, we actually, he actually pulled it up and he said, "I don't know if I can get that." Well, after further research, I did realize that that's not a standard size. So you can't just go to Blevins or Lowe's or Home Depot just to get that size. It's a special order. So after that was brought to my attention, I did address the planning commission to, uh, to, uh, I, I just felt like it wasn't reasonable for us to request or require something that was a special order. So what's before you tonight with the joint public hearing with the planning commission is our section 5.5 fences and walls. And, um, I'm gonna read the part that we're changing. It's section 5.5, uh, fences and walls. Section B says, "No fence or wall between a street and the front of the house in a residential district shall exceed four feet in height." That's what we changed. It used to be three and a half, which would have been a special order. It required our, our citizens to do a special order for something like that. Except on a corner lot in residential districts, there shall be no building or solid fence planting or obstruction to vision more than tw- more than three feet higher than a curb level. A distance of 25 feet in both directions of the intersection. Chain link fencing on a corner lot shall not exceed four feet with the, I'm sorry. Chain link fencing on a corner lot not exceeding four feet will be permitted if the vegetation does not grow through the fence, fence line to prevent clear sign, line of sight for 25 feet. Shrubbery and other plantings in this area shall be trimmed to keep the three feet requirement. And that, Mr. Vice Chairman, is all we've changed in that, in that section of the zoning.
Okay. Uh, does anyone in the audience have any comment on this? Yes?
Well, it's not about this, but it's about another type of fence. Will you allow me to address that, or does it have to be on this specific issue?
What type of fence are you talking about?
Electric fence.
What effect would you want?
I mean, electric fences are prohibited in town. Uh, this has come up before. It's, I think it's been at the zoning administrators' discretion. I think if people's got electric fences around their garden and it's offset their property line, somebody's going to trespass on somebody's property line to touch it. I think we've allowed that in the past. We don't, we don't allow it at property where people can just reach over and touch it.
My, this has to be with the height of the fence.
Okay.
Okay. Any others? Yes?
Where is the 25 feet measure from the center of the, from the, you said?
From the corner of the fence, Jim, back 25 both ways. Create the site, uh, triangle for VDOT requires.
Any others? If not, I'll let the planning commission play out your questions. If not, I'll recommend a motion.
I make the motions that we, um, send to the town council, the provisions that we recommended for the height of the fences.
Mayor say?
Say.
And, uh, any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote in favor, let me know, bring your right hand. No same senator? Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is, change this, return it over to council.
Okay, we'll now close the public hearing on zoning ordinance and turn this over to council for action. End discussion.
I'll make a motion, we accept these changes.
Say. We have a motion second. Is there any discussion?
I always think that the, the planning commission does their, uh, due diligence and their homework and their, uh, about an issue. So I'm certainly gonna support it.
So the motion in second is to accept the planning commission's recommendation on the changes on fence height as specified by Mr. Long. All in favor? And the vote is unanimous. Now going to recess for five minutes and dismiss the planning commission as they are not needed for the continuation of the solid waste ordinance.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Mayor and Planning Commission.
Here the room. So we will resume now the meeting of the Marion Town Council and we will proceed with chapter 58, Solid Waste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you all recall, it's probably been several months ago now, I had brought chapter 58 before council and to let them know, to notify them that I was gonna start enforcing more on the, on the trash. And, um, I had the original, uh, ordinance with me at the time and I passed it around to council and I think it was council's wishes to go through it, to make sure we were all okay with what was there. And that evolved into several sanitation committee meetings and, and I think we've got it to where now that, uh, it's where we want it or what the draft is or proposal's gonna be. And if you would like, I'll read this, it's pretty lengthy, or do you want me to just go over the parts that we changed?
Just change.
Just the changes?
I believe just the changes.
Okay. So on 58 dash three, and Billy, if you want, there you go, okay. So it's up there. The only part of that first page that we changed was, uh, failure to pay fine will result in a lien on the property or added to your monthly water bill. We added, we're proposing or added to your monthly water bill. In, um, section 58 dash four, scroll on down a little bit, Billy, right there. Same thing there. Failure to pay may result in a lien on the property or added to your monthly water bill. It's the only change we made there in that section. Chapter 5831, receptacles required. If it's okay, I'm gonna read this whole section if it's all right.
Yes, sir.
All occupants of premises in the town whose garbage and refuse are to be removed by the town shall provide a sufficient number of watertight metal or plastic receptacles of not over 30 gallons capacity with tight-fitting covers or airtight plastic bags of adequate strength, not over 30 gallons capacity. All that's original. We didn't change anything there. We added this next part. Or sealed or closed cardboard boxes that is of sufficient strength to hold the contents inside. For the removal of garbage, receptacles for refuse shall be metal or plastic, shall not weigh more than 50 pounds and suitable and strong enough to withstand handling and emptying and shall be provide, and shall be provided with covers, airtight seals, or other means to prevent scattering of contents. The, the next section we, we've, that's what we're proposing. All trash receptacles shall be removed from curbside location by 6:00 PM on your trash pickup date. Loose garbage, trash, and/or papers not in trash receptacles or in airtight plastic bags or sealed closed cardboard boxes that will not allow contents inside to be blown or strewn on the property or adjoining properties will not be picked up. If the weather forecast calls for inclement weather from 6:00 PM the day before your trash pickup to 6:00 AM the morning of your trash pickup, cardboard boxes utilized in receptacles may not be set out until 7:00 AM the morning of your trash pickup. Soaked or drenched sealed or closed cardboard boxes that contain garbage, trash, and/or paper will not be picked up and must be removed from the curbside pickup location. The resident shall be responsible for collecting any garbage, trash, and/or paper belonging to them that has been blown or strewn on their property and the adjoining properties. If the airtight plastic trash bag rips due to insufficient strength during the trash collection process or if a soaked or drenched sealed or closed cardboard box that contains garbage, trash, and/or paper burst during the trash collection process, the resident shall be responsible for picking up the spilled trash and removing it from trash curbs, from the trash curbside collection site, and it will be collected the following week on your collection day. That's all for that section. If you scroll on down a little bit, Billy, right, no, right up above that, 33, 5833, right there. Go down a little bit.
Down?
Down. Right there. All right. Uh, the only thing we change in the next paragraph there is, well, I'll just read it. All receptacles containing garbage and refuse for collection by the town shall be set out by the curbside no later than 7:00 AM on collection days. No earlier than 6:00 PM to even before your collection day and shall be placed at curbside locations as may be specified by the town manager so they can be easily reached and conveniently by the town employees. No town employee shall enter any building to remove garbage or refuge. All trash receptacles must be removed from the curbside pickup location no later than 6:00 PM the day of your trash pickup. If you scroll down to 5834, the next change that we done, that used to say a fee set by town manager, we're changing it to, well, we're proposing it to be, to say there will be a fee as set by town council. As you all are aware of, council sets all of our fees. 5836, monthly service charge. The second line says, "The town shall pay a rate per month as set by town council." We changed that. Used to be town manager. Section 5837, pretty much the same stuff. Uh, we just omitted the words town manager and put town council in those positions. No changes to 5838, 5839, 5861, 5862, 5863, 5864. In the old ordinance, we had a size requirement there that was done in 2017 with the size of the trash trucks that comes and picks it up now. We omitted that and we added, "Please check with your waste management provider for enclosure specification to ins- to ensure proper sizing for the solid waste vehicles." And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, that is all the changes we've done there. Yes, sir?
Thank you for your work and, uh, thank everyone from staff that has participated in the process and council. And the, uh, changes now are turned over for council discussion and/or ratification.
Well, I think this is something we have to do, we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, you're correct. Dr. Gates reminded me. This is a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Um, thus, we will ask the public if they would like to comment on any of these. And you did not need to sign up on the public comment form as this is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this, please approach the podium.
Hey, I signed up to speak on public comment. Sarah Taylor, East Coiner, but this is what I wanted to address the council about. So I've, I've read the copy of the ordinance with all the omissions and add-ins and I attended the meeting, uh, the committee meeting. And some of the things that stand out to me, I just made a list, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that for consideration. Um, the proposed ordinance requires trash cans to be brought in by 6:00 PM the day of trash pickup. And this does not provide a good opportunity to comply due to work schedules such as, you know, first responders, uh, second shift workers. Uh, you know, the same amount of time should be allocated to retrieve the trash cans as is allocated to put them out the evening before trash pickup. I mean, people sometimes don't get home before 6:00 PM. Requirements are placed on receptacles such as size, weight, sturdiness. The ordinance states tight-fitting covers as well as suitable to withstand handling and emptying. It also specifies a 30-gallon size. There is no provision for sanitation workers who damage properly, property by inappropriately handling the trash cans resulting in damage. Uh, and the town recently replaced my trash can with a 45-gallon can, which is not in compliance with this. Uh, so that would, that would cause people to have to spend money. The lids, you know, sometimes they tear those off. That, that happened to one of mine as well 'cause they pulled it down the road by the lid. Due to the long list of requirements and rules, the town should consider providing compliant receptacles in the same manner as Saltville and Chilhaui. Uh, the ordinance specifies accountability for residents, but no accountability for sanitation workers when outlining how spilled or strewn trash is to be handled. Uh, and I'm speaking from the point of view of somebody who correctly bags their trash and puts it in the receptacle, uh, you know, it's correctly done and then something that the, uh, sanitation workers, maybe they drop it or spill it. Uh, 'cause of the pictures that I saw that were attached to the agenda packet are definitely situations that need to be looked into. Uh, that is, you know, excessive. I did look at that and I agree that that needs to be taken up. So then we have a sanitation worker's general job description, which I requested early on. And it shows a salary of $41,000 a year. And like the proposed ordinance, it does not have any provisions for the accountability of sanitation workers in the event that they spill or drop correctly contained trash or damage the trash cans. Town of Abingdon's ordinance makes a simple provision for this. If sanitation workers drop or spill trash, they are to clean it up. The town of Marion's trucks appear to be equipped with the same shovels and brooms as other localities for this purpose. Uh, Marion's ordinances seem to be aimed at collecting as many fines as possible by making what should be a simple ordinance more tedious and difficult to comply with while taking no accountability on part of the town for reasonable, for their reasonable part in compliance. You know, making it easy for people to comply with, making it, you know, something that people can comply with. Uh, and lastly, numerous times council members and other employees have cited a camera on trash trucks when questions have, have arose as to how fines, complaints, and appeals are handled under the new ordinance. Uh, so I would like to consider what type of cameras are present on the trash trucks? What's the make, model, and year of the vehicles? Did the camera equipment come as standard equipment? Was it installed aftermarket? Uh, is there, is it there for the safety of the workers and visibility, or is it there for surveillance? And can a sample of photo or video be provided from each camera on these trucks? Uh, and what is the process for requesting this should there be a need for it? And, you know, where is that published? You know, if I, if I need to look that up, you know, that's, that's what I have on this. I read it pretty thoroughly, I think, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Name David Fulton. Past couple weeks, I've been tied up at the hospital with a friend. I didn't get home till nine o'clock at night. And also, like the lady said, second shift worker. Also, the size you recommended, 30 gallon, I've got 33 gallons. So will I have to buy new trash cans? I would like to, some, some type of answers to these questions.
Are there any other that would like to speak?
I've only got one subject that kinda baffles me. In this, everything says airtight seals. I do believe that you cannot buy a trash bag that has airtight seal. On top of that, there's a state law...
On top of that, there's a state law, say you've got a refrigerator, freezer, anything, you must take the doors off of it to keep a small child from getting trapped inside and suffocating. Well, you're now saying that the trash cans has to have airtight seal. That seems contradicted to common sense. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'll now close the public hearing part of this meeting and turn this over to council for questions or action.
My only thoughts on, you're absolutely right. You know, I'm in favor of the next morning at eight o'clock. It just, that just makes sense. That makes common sense. I don't know how else to say with garbage bags. Do you want us to put a range of, I mean, my comment would be, do you say 30 to 40-gallon containers? I don't think they're not going to pick up your trash if it's 33. I, I don't know how to answer those if you're trying to be specific about trying to, trying to have an ordinance. You know, do you, do you say a trash can can be any size? Do you say it can be from 30 gallons to 40 gallons? Do you say it can be from, you know? I, I, I understand your questions, and I'm hemming and hawing, but I don't know when you talk about airtight seals. You know, a trash can, the ones that have the seals that animals can't get in, I guess that's airtight, but I don't know. Do you, you know, a lid's a lid. If you buy a can, do you buy a specific can that says childproof, and do they make those? Do they, I mean, you, I don't know, Charlie.
I don't think.
I mean, I don't think they do. I think they make a can with a lid on it. So to answer your question, I don't know how we get by other than saying a can that has a seal. Maybe we should take airtight out of it. You know, the word airtight. Does that make you feel better?
Can I make a suggestion, council?
Yes.
Most of this stuff was written and passed in 2017. When we looked through this, we probably didn't look at every word. But, you know, I think, I think, my opinion, we need to wor, we don't need to worry about the gallon and the size of the bag and the size of the can. We need to look at the weight. If it's more than 50 pounds, or our guys think it's more than 50 pounds, we're not going to get it.
Well, you can't say our guys think it's more than 50 because the public's going to complain that we didn't pick up their trash.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, on the other hand, we don't carry a scale with it either. I mean, if two guys can't pick it up, it's just, I don't know what to do at that point.
A 45-gallon can would exceed 50 pounds if it was full, I would think.
Well, it depends on what it's full of.
Well, yeah, but I mean, as a general rule.
As, as a general rule. Okay, a couple of things that I would like to say here. I agree, 8:00 a.m. the next morning is ample time for someone to return from work, whatever time, whatever shift. So I would suggest that as a change. The 30-gallon measurement, are trash receptacles under 30 gallons permitted?
Well, it talks about the, of not over 30-gallon's capacity, but I was, I will also say this. Been here for going on 23 years. I've never known our guys not to pick it up. I've never known this ordinance has not stopped it. Like I say, this was verbiage. It was been in there probably almost as long as I've been here.
Could, could we change that to not to exceed 45 gallons and 50 pounds? Would that satisfy 30 to 45?
45 gallon and/or 50 pounds.
And/or 50 pounds. And that, that would accommodate that need. I think that if we'd made those two changes, Mr. Long?
Yes, sir.
Is there a history of us fining people on trash?
No, I, I mean, with the pictures, if, if, Billy, you'll scroll through there. The reason-
On, on routine?
No, not that I know of, and I will tell you something, Mr. Mayor. I know Ms. Taylor was talking about employee involvement and employee, holding them accountable. To my knowledge, I don't know that they've ever busted trash and not picked it up. And that's fine. That's fine. I'm just saying, I'm not aware of it. To answer her question, I don't know the make and the model of the trash, but that was a aftermarket, if I'm not mistaken, video camera to put on the truck for the safety of the employees on the back. To my knowledge, Ms. Taylor's got a forward-facing and a rear-facing camera. Of course, it's not streamed anywhere, and it overrides, it's like the S.D. card-type cameras. It, it's not, it's not uploaded or anything like that. Every two weeks, you can take it out and, and view them.
I think the cameras are present more for safety and-
Yes.
-verification if there's an accident or something like that. I don't think they're intended for compliance-type issues.
No. But I would just, I just wanted to answer her question that she had put during the public comment time.
Our public parks have veri-proof, and they're airtight pretty much. You have to reach your hand in there to trip it, so.
Could-
If it's legal for our public parks, I mean-
Could we change the wording from airtight to watertight? Maybe that would work better, and that would be more accommodating to, if council has any, with those changes, do you think that we can pass this?
I don't see the need to change the airtight myself, but.
Change it.
I mean, if you're taking it literal, I do, I do see that's a logical change. If people are going to this ordinance by the wording that we're putting out, you're not going to meet the watertight or the airtight classification in anything that we use unless you're going to put your trash out in Ziploc bags. So I think that's a logical change.
And what says council about the 8:00 a.m. the next day?
It seems like there's a need for that, and people have requested it, so I don't see the reason in disagreeing with that.
And the 30 to 45-gallon containers, I don't know much about trash containers. I really don't.
One thing I would like to mention is, I know that like Lowe's and Home Depot, they're selling cans now that are around 96 gallons, and they have wheels. And we will use those and just put multiple bags that you can grab the bags out of. So I don't know, there's probably people that are going to exceed those limitations still yet, but I don't really see that you should keep them from using those if the bags have trash inside, if you can grab them out one by one and they're not exceeding the 50 pounds. So that's a sort of a question that I have in mind as well.
I don't know, Tony, you got any input?
I think what you're talking about is very timeless, and we have to be the length of to before 3:00.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're sitting there grabbing and separating bags out of a trash can versus dumping a trash can, that's the only thing I can say.
Okay, that's about the point. So do you guys have any, like, built-in provisions for the employees about what Ms. Taylor was asking of holding them accountable that maybe it might not be publicized in an ordinance, but is there a certain level of accountability that the employees are held to on the trash truck as far?
I mean, it's, it's a riot, I think, verbal version that you can be written up for. It's just, it's the same as any other legal program.
So the question I would have to the public is, knowing that Mr. Muncie has this in place as far as protocol as a hired employee, do you still feel the need that that would need to be spelled out in an ordinance?
I have a job description for that position right here, and I would think it'd either be an ordinance or the job description order the other. So that's, that's why, that was the reason for it.
So I have descriptions, but I mean, it's the same for every employee. It's no different picking up brush. If they're doing something that they shouldn't, I mean, maybe it's wrong.
And we've got to take into consideration, it's one of the, it's the nastiest job we've got.
Yeah.
And you're not going to get-
It's the hardest job.
Yeah, I mean, really, just look at it yourself, would you? I'd rather pick up brush any day than handle garbage. Been an old farm boy, and brush would bother me a bit.
I have seen our trash man pick up trash in my, on my street that the birds have been in and gotten on the ground. I've seen him clean that up more than one time, and I think that's very commendable.
Yeah.
So if, if the vice mayor can articulate the changes that we've just made, and-
I can't if, if Mr. Long has them written down.
So I, I have been making notes, and I do want to clarify that I am understanding you correctly. So for instance, 5831, "All occupants of premises in the town whose garbage and refuge are to be removed by the town shall provide sufficient number of watertight metal or plastic receptacles of not, not to exceed 45 gallons or 50 pounds." Keeps going on, and instead of airtight plastic bags, we're going to change that to watertight. And there again, you're going to have water dripping down in the bag. I don't, um, did we say anything about the bag size? Because we do have it specified here to 30-gallon. Do you want to take that out?
30 gallons is a good size. I mean, gosh, that's a good size of bag.
That is a good size.
I wouldn't change that personally, I mean.
But if you're increasing the size of the can, wouldn't you have to increase the size of the bag that we-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
But if we're increasing the size of the can to 45, wouldn't you have to increase the size of the bag that would-
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. I mean, do we want to specify the size of a bag that they can use? Do you want to say not to exceed X?
I feel like if you're going to change the capacity of your receptacle to not exceed 45, then wouldn't you only pair the bag to match that as well? I believe that's, I believe that's a good suggestion.
Can you get 45?
I don't know, again, about-
I don't, like, can you even get-
You just can't weigh over 50 pounds.
Yeah. And not to exceed 50 pounds.
You can get a 45-gallon trash bag.
I don't think that every time one's going to make a-
I'd just, I'd just leave it alone. 30 will fit in there fine.
So Billy, Tony, do you see any problems with passing this with the changes that we've made?
I do not.
Okay.
There's more.
I have a question.
You've made some more changes, right?
Well, I'm going to go back through this entire document of what we talked about, what we discussed here, and every time I see a airtight, I'm going to change it to watertight. If I see, if I see a limit on gallons or bag sizes, I will make that change not to exceed 45 or 50 pound. And like I say, I think the most important thing, I think our guys are going to pick up whatever they find as long as it's not over 50 pound. That's what I believe.
Mr. Fulton, I will recognize you.
One question, now, we are talking about just household waste, not household junk, correct?
Yes.
Waste.
Okay.
Thank you.
Junk's a whole different, the heavy truck.
So is brush.
I have a question.
Yes, of course.
I appreciate all your work on this, Todd. What is the enforcement? How, how, do you have people that are going to drive around and see if-
So the, in the, my mind's eye, the way I think this is going to work is we'll be out a day ahead of the trash truck to run that route to see if there's already trash setting out. If any of the other stuff happens, it's, it's really mostly going to be left up to the employees on the truck. If, if trash is out, if it's strewn all over the place, they're just going to take a picture and send it to us. We're going to be sending the letters. I, I just don't think there's, I don't have enough staff to follow along behind them to make sure everything's okay. We're going to rely heavily on them as far as that part. As far as setting it out early, we can do that by being a day ahead.
If, if that becomes necessary.
Topic of this whole discussion is when people set their trash out, first thing, size of the bag, size of the can, you know, that, that will take care of what we're trying to take care of if we can get people to set it out when they're supposed to, and not just, you know, carry it out there five days a week and just let it pile up till the trash truck.
And we've got some people who set them out days. And you got vermin, I mean, you got, have rats, you're going to have birds picking at them. Having sanitation.
So with, with these changes, do we have something we can pass?
No, I'd like to get it in writing. I'd like to have those changes in writing so that we can all look at them again, but if, you know, make it available to the public so the public can look at it again, and we get it down right versus we missed something here, we missed a word here, because there are a number of people that are going to look at it word for word. So let's get it. I'm not, I'm not in favor of passing anything today. You know, we can do it the next week. Just have it all exactly the way we want it.
One more clarification I need. You did say trash receptacles shall be removed from the curbside pickup location by 8:00 p.m. the day after your pickup day, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
I thought they said 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m.
The day after your, okay.
8:00, I'm sorry.
And that's the reason we want to get it all written down.
Right.
So we don't get too picky about the wording because we'll just keep pushing it down the road.
We will-
If you get hung up on one or two words in a big, long ordinance, you know, you just keep kicking it down the road, and that's not what we're, we want.
Well, so we've closed the public hearing, and we're in council discussion. What is the proper thing for us to do? I'm, I'm lost here. Do we continue this, or do we?
I'll make a motion, we continue this till we get it in the proper form that we can look at it and the public can look at it.
With the changes made.
With the changes.
I second that. Motion and second? Any further discussion necessary?
How many, are you going to, how does it have to be published on our website?
Yeah.
Is that 10 to 10 days or whatever it is, normal publication?
We've had the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, we're having a public hearing now, so we won't have to have another public hearing. Mark, is there a time limit on the website at how far we've got to have it on our full week? Can we bring it back to the next council meeting?
One, one motion, one moment. Do we need to have another public hearing with these changes, or can council make these changes now?
I don't, that's what I'm thinking. All it is is a verbiage change.
Council can make these changes. Do we need to vote on it now? We, we won't need another public hearing.
I have a motion to continue.
So we have a motion to continue and a second. So we'll vote on the motion to continue.
If you don't want to continue it, then.
And we don't need a public hearing, no.
There, we dispense with that portion of it.
Now, the question for Mark is, can we, can we rehear this at the next council meeting, or how many days does the change got to be on the website for public review?
Your next council meeting is July.
July?
July 30th is closing books.
Yeah, June 30th closing books, I see.
Will the, will the continuance?
Does that, does that ordinance have to be voted on for June 30th, being acted July 1?
No, it would not be enacted until you-
That's what I'm saying.
If you don't adopt it until July 8th, that's the date.
So have to adopt it as of July 8th, okay. Because most ordinances and laws take effect July 1.
So that closes this portion of the public and the solid waste ordinance. Anything further, council? May we continue with the public presentations? And I have a public presentation in my agenda that I am not prepared for, and I believe it may be a typo. My agenda says swearing in of new police officer Travis Levens.
That was canceled. We had a scheduling issue with the account.
I, I didn't see him present, so we will move along then to public comment time, and we have several people that have signed up for public comments. And the first one is Pastor Kayla.
I'm Pastor Kayla Calholtz. I am the pastor of Ebenezer Lutheran Church here in Marion, Virginia. I just wanted to bring to the forefront that tomorrow will be the hearing for our Job Corps here in town to find out what happens. I know that life moves very quickly, and the news moves even quicker, so I just want to keep that in the forefront of our minds. And if Job Corps is able to stay open and the, the students are able to get, finish the learning that they need and take all their tests and everything, that will be wonderful. But if it doesn't go in a positive way, I just want to keep in the forefront that leaders of our community need to come together and figure out how to help these students in order to give them the best chances possible because they came here for a chance. And just a reminder that you all wanted to serve this town because you love this town and you love the people in it, and you are elected because we all trust you and want you to help us make this town wonderful and great, and make it to where people here want to be here and can work towards betterment for themselves. So just want to keep the, in the forefront of our minds, the students of Job Corps and their teachers and other workers there. teachers and other workers there.
What time?
I'm not sure. Do you know the time? I'm not sure.
Okay.
But just tomorrow. Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Pastor, thank you. We next have Sarah Taylor. Sarah, do you wish to speak again? You're complete, so we'll strike that. And the last person that we have in public comment time is Bill Stamper.
Bill Stamper, 659 Spruce. So, I was watching the video of a few weeks ago where my good buddy here, Mr. Hayden, he said that the newspaper called him the town critic. I don't understand this man...let me see this for a second. This man's got nothing but facts right here against everything that y'all have done, and how is he a town critic? If anything, he holds this town accountable. I don't understand why the newspaper, and why the newspaper has a right, well, not a right, but I don't understand why they would call this man a town critic. I think it's ridiculous. And I'm not trying to be mean about this, but y'all never said nothing about it. You still haven't said, "You know what, Mr. Hayden, you're doing a great job. Keep riding us about it." I haven't heard anything. I mean, we need more people like him to bring facts. We need more people like him to, you know, show everything that y'all were doing wrong and hold you accountable. If you need facts, he's got it. If he ain't got it, nobody does. It's just the way it is. And Hunter, I'm just going to pick on you a little bit, buddy, I promise, not much. Last time you said that, you said that if we think that y'all are corrupt or whatever, for us to hire lawyers and all that, you better be careful what you wish for.
Thank you for your comments. And I will make a statement. A critic not only gives criticism, but also can give constructive criticism and can also give good reviews. So, the definition of critic doesn't necessarily mean someone who is overly negative all the time. I know that Mr. Hayden has several good ideas, and he's shared some of those with us recently. So, we do appreciate your input, and if that was a poor choice of words, I apologize for that, but I didn't say that.
You're a good man, buddy.
So, we will proceed now with council reports, and we will start with Larry Carter.
Just don't really have anything major. Just attended the Hungry Mothers' baseball game the other night. Encourage anyone who has no baseball, player and fan, longtime fan, it's good baseball. They're college kids. It's been one of our longtime goals was to bring baseball back. And so, this is the first step, so encourage everyone to come out and, you know, watch them play, and the souvenirs are nice, t-shirts that look good, people are selling. So, just come out and support. It's a town activity, and credit to everybody involved in bringing it here, Ken and whoever else was involved. Good job.
Anything else, counsel?
That'll do it.
Counselman May.
Caring for our community was a huge success. I was not at the first one, but I was at the second one, and I understand there were 110 people that did show up to work throughout the community. And thank you to those people, and that's it.
Counselman, thank you. Counselman Allen.
No report, Your Honor.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes, first thing I want to do is make an announcement about our zoning person, Mr. Todd Long. He has passed the state certification for zoning administrator. He's the first zoning, state zoning administrator we've had here in Marion, and he was the first person that scored 100 on the exam. Did I miss speaking right there, Todd? Okay, all right. The Building and Grounds Committee, Mrs. Blevins, and Todd, you can help me with this. Mrs. Blevins at 590 Look Avenue, she wants to buy the vacant lot beside of her house. Todd did all of the homework. He talked with the adjoining neighbor, and that neighbor doesn't care. She doesn't want to buy any of it. So, I reckon, or the Building and Grounds Committee recommends that we allow Mrs. Blevins to pay the town $9,244.80 for that piece of property, and that will also include a 20-foot easement. So...
And you're would be paying the surveyor's fee as well as the attorney, town attorney fee to do the deed.
Okay, and she's going to do that too? We didn't talk about that.
She has to.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess, is that included, Todd, in the $9,000?
No, that's just the cost of the right-of-way, the $9,244.80, it's just the right-of-way.
Okay.
I did talk to Mrs. Blevins that day. She's aware she's going to get a survey. She's aware that we would require a 20-foot easement for future utility development, and she's also required that we're going to require her to vacate the existing property line up there, so this is the one portion.
Okay, and did she agree to those extra fees?
Well, I mean, she knew that she's going to get a survey. She knew she was going to have deed work. I didn't specify which attorney, but since Mark was our attorney, controls the right-of-way, I mean, I would think that she would know that, but I don't, I didn't specifically say that.
Probably need to be specified that she covers that.
So, I guess, do you want me to make a motion?
If you'd like to make a motion, you may.
Well, I'll make a motion that we allow Mrs. Blevins to buy that, purchase that piece of property with the additional fees, the attorney's fee and...
Surveyor.
And the surveyor's fee.
She will have, once she purchases that property, she will then have additional cost to vacate an interior lot line.
Okay, and all that, is it the...
With the 20-foot easement.
With the 20-foot easement, right.
Her, the surveyor, there'll be a second survey showing that interior lot line to be vacated.
Okay.
And the adjacent owner was notified?
Yes.
In writing?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with her on the phone. I tried to speak with her personally, nobody came to the door. I didn't leave the car. She called me. She said that she's got no problem with this Blevins person.
So, all notices have been made, and she agrees to the additional terms. That is your motion.
That is my motion, yeah.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion needed? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer.
No report, sir.
Vice Mayor Gates.
Yes, a couple things. The Water Committee has talked about the issue that was brought up last week, and town staff has tried to contact the gentleman that brought up the issue.
He talked to you then. I explained that we're still working on that.
We're still working on it. There were some other issues that came up. It wasn't as cut as dry as it was perceived in the council meeting at the time, so we're still working on that, and we'll come to a resolution with that young lady and her water bill. On a really neat note, I'm going to bring Ms. White in here for a second to describe the girls tennis season.
Oh, they won, just finished last week, winning their third straight state championship, and Parker and Ava Austin won Marion's first double state championship ever for girls or boys that I'm aware of. And Parker finished runner-up in the singles finals that she played in her fourth championship. So, it's another really phenomenal year. I'll let you do the boys, but before you do the boys, I'll say that Marion became the third school in VHSL history to bring home both the boys' and girls' titles in a state year.
That's good.
The boys had a very fortunate year. They were talented enough to win the last four matches down the stretch. You have to win five matches out of nine to move on, and they were fortunate enough to win the last four by a score of five to four. So, it was very close tennis. I almost had a ulcer during that time, and it was fun watching. My grandson played just well enough at times to win and contribute to the team, and they all played, not above their heads, but they all played to the point that you don't, they did not quit. I guess that was the point. So, we have boys' and girls' state championships.
Yes, lots of fun. And Mr. Carter spoke about the baseball team, and they are letting the tennis teams be a part of the back home baseball game on this Thursday.
Good.
Good.
And I would like, if possible, Mr. Heath, if, I'd like to make a motion that we honor both teams with a resolution and invite them to counsel on the meeting on the 7th.
I think that you'll find that some of them are vacationing.
Vacationing, okay.
But it might be better if you do the first August meeting, because they're back in school now. And our college kids haven't gone away yet.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
And we have a motion and a second. There is some signage that should be changed. Do you want to include that in your motion, Dr. Gates?
I would, and maybe make a sign that...
We tried to sign a sign that has all the going signs.
Right, and maybe places for more.
Yeah, additional space. Because that's the first time in history, boys team wouldn't...
I'll rescind the first motion and make that motion.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, I thought I did, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but...
I rescinded.
Oh, oh.
Actually, you would have had to rescind or second.
I sent you that list that passed. Did you get it?
Yeah.
We're not going to get too technical. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, no, thank you. Councilmember Hayes.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Nothing at this time, thank you. And I've a couple pieces of housekeeping. I've spoken with all members of council, and we are in agreement that we would like to instruct the town manager to provide a link on the website to the tentative budget, and then, of course, once that budget becomes finalized, the adopted budget. Also, we need to assign to committee the, we need a FOIA policy on our website that states fees and our statement to FOIA. We need to put that in the hands of the ordinance committee.
Ordinance committee.
So, I would like a motion to send that to ordinance committee, and also that we go ahead and put the links on to our adopted tentative budgets.
Okay, I'll make that motion for both of those issues.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And that leaves the mayor's report, and everybody's already reported on everything that I had to report on for the most part. The Hungry Mothers, we've been at several other baseball games, and they're absolutely wonderful. Caring for our community, lot of, lot of good work got done there, and a lot of good fellowship there as well. So, it was a very good community event, and I want to thank all of the members of the board, and especially Alan and Brenda, for their guidance in that. I encourage everyone to do that at the next opportunity to volunteer. Volunteerism in Marion, Virginia is not dead.
No, it isn't.
And we are thankful for that. And I want to give a big thank you to Public Works and all of the staff for cooperating in all the things that we needed to make that happen. So, thank you, and please send that on down the line. We have Juneteenth coming up. I want everybody to participate and go out and enjoy our fellowship with the community. We have an open house, which Ken will tell us about here in a few minutes for the EDA. We've got a cruise in coming up. When is that, Ken?
Everything's Saturday.
Everything's Saturday, all right. The Kingdom airs on June 26th at the Lincoln. Let's encourage, so, go Hungry Mothers, enjoy baseball, hot dogs, snow cones, and the community. And we have fireworks coming up on the 6th of July with the Marion Food Festival on the 4th. Is that right, Ken?
Crab Fest.
Crab Fest, Crab Fest. Okay, so Ken will tell us all about all those things during his report, and I have nothing further at this point in time.
We've got at least one local player.
Pardon?
We have at least one local player on the Hungry Mothers. Greg Sawyer's the one.
Okay, well, sports are alive in Marion as well.
Plays again.
And we digress. Attorney's report.
Yes, so, this afternoon, I got served with a petition. The unfortunate part for the attorney and his client is that the petition's actually something that council would have to first approve, and then council would direct that the town attorney file a petition. So, I anticipate that this petition, after speaking with their attorney, will be dismissed so that it can be done properly. The person that is wanting to open up a pond brokerage is Luke Mercer. I'm not sure of the location, but he intends to work that out of, but it would definitely have to be a commercial zone property. There is a fee that has to be paid for the town to file this, but before that takes place, the town council has to determine if there is a need for a pond brokerage agency.
Would this be the second one, then?
Well, so, we have had one first that was Tony Adams, and then Tony Adams sold to his son, and so his son then had the town petition, and then his son had criminal convictions that caused him to no longer be able to be the owner of a pawn shop. And so, Tony then took that back over to close it out, and during the, while Tony had a pond brokerage, then we had a precious metals, which is not the full gamut of the pond brokerage, but the mayor has a precious metal authorization. So, we don't have a pond brokerage in town at this point.
Not one coming to Willoughby?
This would be, would be a new one to replace one that went out of business. So, I did speak with the attorney. They're wanting to get it done, and just, they didn't know, didn't realize what the code said had to be done. So, the town council could set this, because I did in fact get served, and he did serve the Commonwealth attorney, which would not be an appropriate person anyway, but that shows that Luke Mercer is wanting that so the town council could consider whether or not they want to set it for a public hearing.
But you didn't have a definite location, did you say?
He may have a definite location. What got served on me, I don't know what that is.
Mr. Finnick, at this point in time, I would like to turn this portion of the meeting over to Vice Mayor Gates and recuse myself from further proceeding with this process.
Yeah, I guess the question is, you know, a pawn shop is a legitimate business.
Yeah, before Adams, we had...
It's not like we have six and we're getting another one for competition business.
Mark, we had one before Adams.
Unless there's something, unless there's some thing that we need to consider that's not, if they go, if they follow all the rules as far as where they're located...
Well, that's the easy part.
Right.
They have to be in a commercially zoned.
Right, and if it's commercial, we knew it could be a pawn shop... Right. And if it's commercial, we knew it could be a pawn shop from our zoning ordinance anyways.
Well, the code of Virginia actually comes in, our zoning ordinance doesn't have in it that the council makes the determination.
Okay.
I have the location.
So, so then, is it, do you legally see any reason that we can't take a vote today whether to grant a pawn shop?
To direct me to file the petition.
Yeah. Is there any legal reasons? Is there, is there a public hearing afterwards?
Well, you would, there would not be a public, if you went ahead and did it now, there's not going to be a public hearing.
Right.
Because what would happen next is I would then get the attorney to have his petition dropped. I would then file the appropriate petition because he can't file it on behalf of the town. I have to do it as the town attorney.
Well, I guess, I guess then it comes up to council's decision, do you want to have a public hearing?
I don't see the need. The location's going to be 112 East Main Street, the former Hester's Fudgery Building.
I mean, we had one on Broad Street.
We had one years ago, Poodle Matheny, in the pool room.
Years and years.
Didn't we, didn't we, Bill? Yeah, sure did. So the precedent is here. It's, it's just a matter of following the...
I guess, what does council wishes? I'm acting mayor.
It's a good, it's a viable business. We don't have one, so I'm, go for it.
I have no problem.
I would like to ask Mr. Long's opinion, if there's anything that we should consider that we're not thinking about.
Absolutely not. It's a retail business, and it's allowed by law in a commercial district.
Well, when he says allowed by law, that, that is, that is where one could go, but they can't go in a commercial district unless council approves that. There are restrictions on pawn brokerages.
They said a commercial district, so that's the main thing already.
So what are the restrictions in a commercial district?
Well, that, that is what our zoning ordinance says, that, that one would be allowed in a commercially zoned district.
Oh, okay, okay.
All Main Street's commercial.
What's the wishes?
I say, I'll make a...
Someone's got to say something.
I'll make a motion, and we go ahead and accept...
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion or questions of council or staff?
I was going to get the legal criteria.
If there are no, if there are no, if there are no other questions, I'll call for the, call for the question. All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Sure.
All opposed, likewise. Motion carries.
So this will not be an immediate thing because he will have to deliver the fee, and we'll have to look back and see what that fee is, and then we'll have to have a copy of the bond. A petition that the attorney filed said there is one, but he didn't include any of that information.
But they do have to be bonded, don't you?
Mm-hmm, $50,000.
You sure do. Yeah, that's right. Forgot about that.
An amount not less than $50,000.
I'll turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gates. And we will continue now with staff reports. Cindy Stanley.
First, we need a motion to consider setting the special column meeting for June 30th at what time?
I'll make that motion, that we set that meeting for June 30th.
At what time?
Five o'clock is what we normally do.
We don't, yeah, five o'clock.
Motion, do I hear, or second?
Say.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Then we'll meet on the 30th at 5:00. All in favor? We will set that meeting.
Thank you. Have the accounts, please.
So we'll need to set the accounts for payment. Would anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And now, would there be any discussion of individual items in the accounts? None being heard. We'll set the motions for paying bills. All in favor?
Thank you.
And we have the PD General Operations, that would be either Rick Billings or Kevin Testerman, or both. Come, enter.
Well, we want to thank the Karen Wood Community Police Department of Detroit. They're really a pretty good place up around with the flowers, totally, with all the flowers and the trefferies. We're geared up for the summer events. We have five lots of plants relevant to the harvest of July, and all of July, of course, all the other festivities going on. Our new hire is in the third Wicket Academy doing well, and Haley Shee, she's still in the FTO process, and she's, it looks like she's going to be a really good saw officer.
All right, thank you for your report. Is, okay, Mr. Telly.
Yeah, Chief Ham is out of town. I'm not sure how the timing of this coincides with the previous council meeting, but we've had three people start recently. One was Hunter Dean, who's a firefighter paramedic from Tazewell. Leon Kukadatnam, tried that one twice, who's a firefighter EMT also from Tazewell, and Zach Woods, who's a firefighter EMT from Adwell. Hunter's full-time, the other two are part-time, and they've started running here recently. Incumbents on the council were recalled in 2021. Under the federal Aid to Firefighters Grant Program, we had a $100,000 grant for the exhaust system at the station. Closing out those grants is a long tedious process. We submitted a final report last December. Couple days ago, it appears as though they finally read it, and they've asked for one small revision, so we'll take care of that, and that should be the last hoop to get that $100,000 grant completely closed out. As far as operations go, in May, we ran 206 calls, so year-to-date through the end of the, end of May is 1,057 versus 1,078 last year, so we're basically right on track with last year's schedule. And if there aren't any questions, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Welcome back, Ken Heath.
Good evening, Mr. Heath.
Say Bob.
Economic Development.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
No cane. I'm impressed.
No cane. I found out once I got my hip fixed how bad my knees were, so it's a process. We're building those back up. Good being back. Appreciate the cooperation of the staff and council to get me to this point, and we're moving forward, going in. This Wednesday, the mayor is going to join me on TV, so make sure your TV's ready for it to be broken for the two of us to be on Channel 11. We'll be doing the 10 o'clock, the 9 o'clock and 10 o'clock shows, talking about events here in town. This Friday night at the Lincoln, they're showing The Wizard of Oz. So that ought to be, if you haven't seen that on the big screen, that's going to be a lot of fun. Saturday's a big day for us. We have the open house at the two houses on Church Street. We'll have housing specialists here to help anybody interested in learning more about the program, not just on those two houses, but on any of the houses that the EDA has, and it's from 10 to 2. And Public Works is helping us set up a tent and tables and all the stuff we'll need to have that, because I'm sure it's going to rain, because it rained every other day we've had anything, so. And then that evening, we have a cruise-in at the farmer's market. Of course, the farmer's market that morning from 8 to noon, the cruise-in with Victor Lawson that evening, and then we'll also be doing the Juneteenth celebration. There's a program Friday night at Mount Pleasant of Gospel Music, and Sunday at the museum, and then our celebration with the mighty kicks we had a couple of years ago. Matter of fact, in 2021, on Main Street, we'll be here from 6 to 9 at Riverbend Park, so excited for all of that. Talked to Cindy. There's no change in the trash schedule. Pick up for Thursday. County's off for Juneteenth, so we just want the public to know that we're still picking up trash on Thursday. I think that's about it.
Is EDA still pretty active?
Very active, yeah. James McNeil and Bob Schultz have really taken the reins.
Who is?
Bob Schultz is vice chair, James McNeil is chair, and taking the reins, moved to several properties. They've gone and done an assessment on the properties that can't be built on easily, offered those to adjacent property owners. So the goal of the EDA at this point is to put that property back in the hands of the taxpayers, to move it, and to move on to other projects. So that's, that's the goal, is to get these houses that we have built, sold, do everything we can to help move those forward, so.
When is it going to be?
Always, it's the first Wednesday after the first Monday. It's something Bill set up. I don't, I have to have a slide rule to figure it out, but I'll, we'll remind everybody when we have one.
Would you like to mention something?
Yes, ma'am.
Jane Tang, on that Sunday...
Yes, ma'am.
About 3 o'clock, we call him Scraper, but I think his name's Arthur Brody.
And I couldn't remember anything other than Scraper's, why I didn't mention it.
Okay. He's going to do the reenactment of the revolutionary...
Yes, of his, of his...
Of his ancestry or something, yeah.
His grandfather.
Okay. His kinfolk, and that's at the museum.
It's at the Lincoln.
Okay, at the Lincoln, okay, that's right.
At 3 o'clock.
Gotcha. So big weekend, lot of fun. Folks, if you know anything else, I want to excuse myself. It's my 35th wedding anniversary, and if I don't go home and fix dinner, I may be here a lot more than you all planned.
Could be your last.
Thank you all.
Ken, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
And next, we have zoning and property maintenance. Todd, you've, you've had a big night. Do you have more that you would like to share with us?
No reports, no reports, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd. And the town manager's report.
Really, I have no report. I'll give you a couple of small updates. These projects are ongoing, and sometimes the progress is slow. We have phase nine through 12, just to let you know, we have two subcruise work, two different areas, and we've had that for some time. One of you, right now, is on Patton Avenue, and the other one is up here on East Main, so that's, as you know, that's a continuous project, so. Radio Reed, in May, contractors installed 674 meters. We're thinking we've only got about 300 more left, so hopefully we'll have those all installed before too much longer. We did run a little short on the half-inch meters, so if we all close it out real soon, it's going to be, I don't know, we'll get the small meters. But we've almost got it. And pretty much, unless you have questions, we'll get on to the other stuff.
Did the price of pike ever stabilize? I know back a couple years ago, it was, went sky high.
It did some while. I don't think it'll ever be down.
Down where it used to be.
I mean, I still got, the 40-year ago prices, my, some of them, it just amazes me how much it's had went up.
Yeah, I know it really has.
The standard is a lot higher than I remember back in the day.
Okay, so that will close out the portion of the council meeting, and I want to thank the public for attending and for all your input. We will return to open session after our closed session, but our closed session will probably be lengthy, so I will ask Council Member Jennings to bring us into closed session.
I make a motion. We go into closed session and discuss two issues. The first one is personnel, is allowed under State Code 2.23711A1, and a real estate issue is allowed under State Code 2.23711A3.
All in favor? All in favor?
Todd.
I make a motion to go back into open session and declare that we only discuss the two issues, the real estate issue and the personnel issue as allowed under state code 2.23712.
Second.
Motion and second to go back into open session, all in favor? I believe we need to poll. Yes.
Aye.
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 We're back in open session now. And is there any action that the town council would like to take?
Yes, and I'll make that motion. On behalf of our council, we would like to hire Mr. Kevin Testerman as our next police chief.
I believe that needs to be in the form of a motion.
Or an appointment. Yeah, or a point, yeah, instead of hire, a point.
It's an appointment, or is it?
I believe it needs to be motioned and seconded. Second.
That was a motion, I did make the motion.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Waiting for the second. We have a motion and a second to appoint Kevin Testerman as the next chief of police of the town of Marion, Virginia. Any discussion?
Effective date?
Effective date? Immediately.
Tomorrow? I mean, we didn't sign a formal agreement for the interim, it was written.
We can make the offer.
You said your position.
Okay, like effective tomorrow.
Plus you need to work out finances.
Yeah.
You know, we haven't talked about that as a council.
How about if we, yeah, okay, so my motion will say, we'll appoint him and then work out the particulars on everything that he has to do and then he will start.
So do we need to rescind the first motion?
No, you could just amend it to say, to work out the start date.
Okay.
I would also like to say we had three very, very good candidates.
Agreed.
Amen to that.
And, yeah.
Exceptionally good.
But we need to vote on this motion.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? And it's unanimous? Now entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We stand adjourned.